Good evening and welcome to the Elk Grove Township Board Meeting dated October 27, 2025. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dukes.
Present.
Trustee Lujai.
Present.
Trustee Stanyek.
Here.
Trustee Winekoop.
Present.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Here.
Assessor Caricelli.
Present.
Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda. If there is an item on the agenda that you'd like to address, you can do that at the appropriate time. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you. Yes, please, right over there. Thank you.
My name is Margarita O'Brien. Do you need my address?
Not necessary.
Okay. I am Elk Grove Township resident. I'm also a League of Women Voters member. And recently, I took a hard copy application of voter registration. I did call Elk Grove Township because traditionally what we do is we drop it off at the townships or we take it to the courthouse. When I called Elk Grove Township, I was informed that by a volunteer that it wasn't being done here and that I should go to the Elk Grove Library. Now, I have not, I came from the Mount Prospect Library. I have not vetted that information. What surprised me, called me a little old-fashioned, was that it was a volunteer who was answering the phones and then coming back. She went to someone else to get the information and then brought it back to me. And I do think that there is a time and place for volunteers. I do think that, that, you know, I used to tell nurses, the municipal nurses, beware the volunteer. They'll put you out of a job. And so, that was my concern. I just wanted to share it.
Absolutely. So I'm not sure exactly the protocol, but I would think that if the volunteer receptionist doesn't have the answer, that she then should transfer the call to someone that works for the township that has the answer to make sure that nothing is lost in translation.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Is there any clarification on what I said?
Sure. So our volunteer program at the front office is fairly new. We have just a couple of volunteers right now learning and rotating those shifts. And we do treat them pretty similarly to employees. So when someone is learning in the very beginning, we do ask that they ask those questions. They're very concerned with doing the right thing, so they always want to make sure that you receive that answer. And they probably didn't transfer because those calls can sometimes get lost. So, she is right. We don't take the paper copies of the mail-in ballots. We, whether it's a physical paper, we ask you to mail them or drop them off at a different location. We can help you register online to vote, help you submit that application. So, that information could have been given to you. But I do take the feedback very seriously, so I will talk to the front office about kind of how we're rolling that out. The reason we started with a volunteer receptionist is to keep our payroll costs down.
The point of order was not my application. It was an application by someone else.
Sure.
Okay.
And yes, how the way that the league handles it is that it goes to the township or it goes to the courthouse.
Okay.
So, really township is, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll stop and talk with you after the meeting just to pass on my card so we can communicate a little bit more, okay? Thank you. Next.
Yeah, hi, Janice Ferris. So I'm wondering, when does SNAP benefits run out? Next week? Is the food pantry here kind of prepared to handle the extra demand that's surely going to happen?
We've definitely had some internal conversations about that. We're hoping that Congress does the right thing and extends the budget. But in the meantime, we have to be prepared because there's going to be people out there that are, that are looking for food because of the SNAP benefits. You want to give a little bit of an update?
Sure. We are going over a couple of different options with our Social Services Director. We have to be very careful in how we accommodate additional visits because we have a limited amount of staff as well as volunteers in the food pantry. So, in order to meet the need, we have to make sure that we have the capacity to do so. But we are prepared in the extent of food. And we were gonna, we were gonna announce it right on November 1st if we needed to. But we will offer pre-packs, additional pre-packs to those who are registered. It's very difficult to figure out how many people we're going to be seeing because there's potentially a lot of people that are currently not utilizing the food pantry because they're relying on SNAP. So we really won't know for the first week or two what we're looking at.
Do you have an estimate of how many people in Elk Grove Township are using, are on SNAP benefits? Because, to kind of give you an idea.
No. So the best we have is we know that 80% of our food pantry current registered recipients are SNAP recipients. So 80% right now. So they will probably need additional support, and those are already registered individuals. I don't have an idea of how many people within Elk Grove Township receive SNAP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, that'll close public comment. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. First up is authorization for payrolls and bills, the Town Fund, the General Assistance, Road Department, and Sewer. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the bills and the financial report?
Yes.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, then I'm going to move on to the department reports. First up is our Department of Administrative Services. I think we're continuing to see an increase in, in our completed passports. What has, in September, if you look at September of this year versus last year, really static in the number of total completed rides. I think that the, the new software service that we're using is, is increased our overall rides fiscal year-to-date, 4854 to 4315, so we're up about 12%. The medical and the township appointments, appointments account for the majority of the difference that you'll see on there. In social services, we've, the department participated in the township, townships of Cook County Educational Seminar at Bremen Township, and also two general assistance clients terminated this month due to social security approval. So that's, that's a good thing because that's what the department works on is, you know, taking care of people who are unable to get their social security benefits. And once they do, then they're removed from the township coffers. We are seeing a slight increase year-to-date for general assistance recipients, but again, September was static. And we've had a lot of success with reaching out and making sure that the total appointments were completed, where there was an increase of those of about 12% as well. In the food pantry, we continue to see a demand. We have about 1,050 households that were served in September versus 952 last year. Total donations are up, which is a good thing because we're going to need them, as well as the, the foods, the, the product that we receive from Greater Chicago Food Depository, Meyer, the community, and of course, the Fresh Produce. Our volunteer hours are up significantly, which is great. We have such a great volunteer crew. They've begun the, and also the department has begun the prep for the Thanksgiving meal distributions, which will occur on November 15th. That's a Saturday. It's a drive-through event. This will be the first time the township runs this event on a Saturday, increasing accessibility for those in need. Department of Youth Services, this is amazing that they are now at year-to-date with school District 59, and nearly, serving nearly 1,500 students versus 720 last year. Their Future Leaders Program has, is over double. And with school District 57, we've, we've just gotten started with them. I know that there's some programs that are occurring this month and next month. September marks the one-year anniversary of the Challenge Course and the Bicycle Safety Program, so that is fantastic. Overall, in onsite programs, the department has seen a significant increase this fiscal year. The Youth Services Team has served 737, 738 children and adolescents compared to 492 this time last year, which has increased about 33%. We also have a, an IGA with School District 57. And the agreement we have with School District 59 continues to flourish and uncover additional needs. The department was recently contacted about providing additional support on racism within the classroom. They're working with school officials, but we anticipate it will be a train-the-trainer type of curriculum and not direct contact with the students as we are still addressing new, new needs, newcomer needs. Adult and family counseling, we've talked about this over the last couple of meetings. Significantly, a significant increase of the people that we are now serving. Fiscal year-to-date, nearly 1,600 people have been seen by our counselors, which is a 46% increase over last year. And total, the program has seen a 20% increase in the number of clients that are being served and an even greater number of counseling sessions. And that is all I have for the department reports. Are there any comments or questions about the department reports?
Trustee Stanyek, I have a question about the food pantry.
Yes.
If I could ask Cory, our Director of Foods, not Food Services, Social Services, excuse me, to tell us what the SNAP benefits actually stand for and who are the recipients are and how our clients get eligible for, for that. Because I'm sure people would like to know that.
Cory, if you could step to the microphone, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I see people have probably seen changes in the news, but SNAP is the, you, some people might be familiar with the very antiquated term "food stamps." So SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So it is an income-based program, based on your income, your assets, and then your household size. So, our clients, as Izzy mentioned, our services, a lot of our services and social services, we have to take all information based on applications. Some stuff we don't. So we don't necessarily have to see a benefit verification letter. When someone registers for the food pantry, based on our Greater Chicago Food Depository stipend, we do have to verbally ask them if they receive SNAP benefits. We don't have to ask them how much they're seeing. But again, that is verbal, and that is about 80% of our clients do receive it. And so, like I said, someone does apply through the Department of Human Services with the State of Illinois. It's approved through the Department of Service, of Human Services with the State of Illinois. During COVID and post-COVID, that's really why we expanded some of our programming, because we now assist folks in applying for those applications at our site. Because it's really moved to online. If anyone has ever tried to get into DHS at the Illinois level, it's, it's nearly impossible because they are just understaffed and overwhelmed. So we've stepped in to try to fill that role, to do a lot of that clerical work for folks. In the last, during COVID, there was a lot of extra funds. People were applying and receiving SNAP for the first time oftentimes during those times because people were getting laid off and all of that bad stuff. And so people were getting traditionally, I should say, larger numbers than traditionally. And so a lot of our seniors were entering the first time in that arena getting SNAP benefits. So year after year since then, the amounts have gone down and down and down and down. And so what I can tell you is a lot of our folks that we work with that receive SNAP, many of them are fixed-income seniors, only on like a little bit of a pension and their social security benefits. And they're now seeing their SNAP benefits being $26, $53. And a lot of them aren't even renewing them, because they're like, why is it worth the paperwork to get this amount? Which we discourage that. We say, hey, you know, you're entitled to this and you can get some other stuff. So we're not seeing people get those, those, those big amounts. We're trying to work with families to anticipate what is going to happen, especially with our larger families. So as Izzy mentioned, we have looked at capacity. We're not going to make any changes until we know exactly what happened. As Supervisor mentioned, we're hoping that at the, at the nth hour that, you know, they'll come to an agreement. But we will be prepared. If there isn't, we will make sure people are not hungry. And we will look at household size and we will look at that. We have enough food. We hope that if this does happen in November, that it will be brief. So everyone just give good thoughts for that, and we will be prepared to help people. And we will be prepared to help people navigate the, you know, because I'm sure there are a lot of our seniors who are maybe lower cognitive functioning that don't watch the news and don't, and they're not going to understand when they're not getting those benefits in their account next month if that is to occur. So we'll also be there fielding those extra questions and working with them in those capacities. Any other questions?
You did mention seniors are a large group of the recipients of food pantry and SNAP benefits in general. What are, if you can think of any other groups that are also large group of recipients of those benefits?
Definitely. So, another large group, of course, are families. You know, it is, it's a common myth that SNAP recipients do not, you know, do not work. That is not, often not true. We have a lot of parents that do have kiddos at home, and they are either just underemployed or, you know, like I said, underemployed or not getting enough hours. You know, they're laid off, children have illnesses at home or whatever it might be. I do have families that we work with that they might, you know, receive those benefits for six months, and then they do the redetermination and then their circumstances have changed, which is always the goal. And then, you know, get off those programs. But that's why, in our department, we try as much as we can to work at that holistic approach, because if we're seeing those families and going, you know, you're underemployed, you've got this and this, and you're only making, you know, 14, 15 an hour, let's get you to our employment specialist. Let's do X, Y, Z to try to look at the whole approach. You know, are you paying X amount in dental fees? Let's get you hooked up with the dental van. Are you doing all of these different things? And what services can we provide?
Awesome. That sounds like a wraparound services that we offer in a township, which is great to hear. Last question, and people always want to know, residents always want to know, how can they be helpful? What can they do? How can they get involved?
Well, the number one thing is to just remind people that we're here. You would be shocked. I mean, we're seeing over 1,000 households a month, but people don't even realize that we have a pantry. There are no income guidelines for our pantry. We recognize that if people are coming for the pantry, they, they need food. There is a lot of the pro, a lot of the financial programs through the government are income-based but do not take into account how expensive it is to live in our area. So you might look at paper and go, wow, they make pretty good money. Not after they pay their mortgage and their kid has their football fee and X, Y, Z. So it's important to recognize, we don't take income guidelines for our pantry. So you can come here, we just need proof that you live within the township. If there are circumstances like you're homeless or staying hotels, things like that, we have protocols for all of those different things. So we will work with anybody. Households with one, two, or three can come once a month, four or more twice a month. And then we always promote all of the other pantries in our area. We understand that, you know, the intent for the pantry isn't to fill up yourselves for the entire month. So let's look at other services that can just make sure that there's, there's food in the household.
Thank you. And the residents can donate, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Letting people know that we're here, and of course, donating at any time, nine through, excuse me, nine to four, Monday through Friday. If you ever need a pickup, if you're ever looking for your, your neighborhood, or your business, or your friends, or you individually looking for somewhere to give donations, please kindly think of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Cory, can you just give us an update? If I'm not mistaken, I read that we're currently about halfway to our goal for the Thanksgiving meal drive.
We are. So, smart to know. I just want to back up. Traditionally, we used to do a Thanksgiving basket drive, if people remember that, which was so fabulous. And I think that donors were kind of disappointed when we took that away. They shouldn't take that away. And we shifted because we usually got about 150 residents to make these nice baskets that we'd give to families. But we have about 1,000 families that use the pantry, so it really left a, a big gap in people that could use the meal. So instead, what we've done is a monetary drive. Right, we're collecting $14,000. We're about halfway there. Unfortunately, the price of, we can't anticipate when we plan this, what the price of poultry is going to be, and it's a little bit higher than we thought it was going to be. But we'll make do. We'll scrimp and we'll, we'll figure it out. So we're anticipating feeding approximately 900 families those holiday meals. They'll have full turkeys with all of the side dishes, butter, eggs, desserts, milk. So it'll be a very bountiful, it's not just a turkey and a box of stuffing. They will have a bountiful meal.
Potatoes, right?
Potatoes, real cream. Yeah, not just the flakes, real potatoes. So, yeah, we're excited, yeah.
Thank you, Cory.
You're welcome.
If there's no other questions, we're going to move on. Or can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Trustee Lujai makes a motion to accept the consent agenda for the authorization for payroll and bills and department reports.
Trustee Duke, second. Roll call.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lujai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Winekoop.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. Next up is the approval of the minutes, dated September 22, 2025, for our regular board meeting. Everyone have an opportunity to take a look at the minutes or review them? Are there any comments or questions? We get a motion for approval?
Trustee Stanyek approves the motion to approve minutes for September 22, 2025.
Trustee Winekoop, second. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Winekoop.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lujai.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. Next up is our presentation for liability and workers' comp, workman's comp insurance renewal. I believe that we have our presenter on Zoom, Michael Alicia here?
Yes.
There you are. How are you?
Good. Thank you, Supervisor. My name is Michael Alicia. I am with Alliant Insurance Services and have had the privilege of being your insurance broker since 2008. I am a governmental insurance specialist with over 33 years of experience. And if you wish, I could just jump right into it. I know insurance is everybody's favorite subject. Doesn't seem to be going down all the time.
No, nothing about insurance goes down, except maybe the payouts. All right. So yes, if you could go through the presentation for us, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. I'll just get right to it. The premium is slightly increasing from 106,000 to 112,000, or roughly 6.9%. The drivers of your insurance are primarily your workers' compensation line, due to low premiums paid historically, but unfortunately, there was a large claim a number of years ago that is throwing off your experience calculations. The other issues regarding your insurance increase is that, we're in Illinois. We're in Cook County, and the overall insurance market is not very comfortable in Illinois, especially in Cook County. And that's been for, you know, 15-plus years now. Markets are leaving the area. They might even have their offices in Chicago and Illinois, and the carriers are just leaving. It's due to the high amount of claims or nuclear verdicts coming out of the court system downtown. Some additional drivers to your increase are property values slightly increased from 12.3 million to 12.5 million, or 2%. We see that 2% every year and follow what the inflationary factor is for replacement cost on property. Two years ago, the inflationary increase was 9.5% during the COVID time. We had a couple years of that. If you don't compound it, by year five, you're going to be lagging, of which a, a big correction was needed. So we like the philosophy of ticking up it very small each year to avoid any unknowns and compounding issues. Payrolls, as regards to workers' compensation, payrolls went up from 1.5 million and change to about 1.7 or 11.66%. And then, and there's the claims. Unfortunately, the township suffered a large property claim. The building that you are in right now, right near the time of acquisition, and that claim was 365,000. That claim is going to fall off your experience next year, which will help your property and casualty. But the big one right now is the workers' compensation. There was a large claim in the 22, 23 year that was in the amount of 123,000. It was settled better than expected. The estimate on that claim was originally 160. Your staff and the loss adjusters did a really good job of, of getting that thing settled as quick as possible before it hemorrhaged even more. But what's interesting about the 22, 23 year is while the claim was 123,000, the premium paid for workers' compensation that entire year was 13,000. And that's what's throwing off your experience. Unfortunately, that claim is going to stay on for one more renewal cycle. And then after that, pending, knock on wood, good, great claims that you historically have had, your experience modification will significantly drop, of which you'll be achieving nice discounts on the workers' compensation. Historically, as I've been working on with you since 2008, you know, there are shock losses and large losses that statistically happen every 20 to 25 years. And you had a group of claims in between property and this. But otherwise, district is, or the township is very proactive in everything they do. And unfortunately, claims happen. And pending any questions, that's, that's about it.
Thank you. For clarification of those in the audience and watching at home, the claim in 2023, I believe it was, had to do with repair to the roof. That we had significant damage, and that was the claim that was put in. Mr. Alicia, if you could just talk a little bit about maybe the reclassification, I think that that's also part of the reason for the increase at workman's comp, correct?
Yes. So workers' compensation in the United States is guided by the National Council on Compensation Insurance. And every so many years, the NCCI, as they're known, goes through other classifications and broadens or restricts coverage, or restricts the classification and makes changes. And the township, townships, I feel, have suffered the most with their stricter guidelines. Putting jobs that normally would be in a, a very lighter rated or a lower-rated class code would have moved into class codes that require more rate. This is not unique to Elk Grove. This hit all my townships. And it, it's just a shame. But that is something that the National Council on Compensation Insurance decides. But to the township's benefit, it was caught a little later. So the township did benefit without the change a few years ago. And unfortunately, the impact was greater because it wasn't caught by them before. But, you know, you can, the argument can be the township enjoyed the savings as well.
Okay. That, I don't know if that makes us feel better or not, but I guess it's supposed to make us feel better. Anybody from the board have any questions? You know, the one thing, I have some experience with binding liability and workman's comp coverage, and these reclassifications are pretty interesting. So if your job is mostly clerical, but you go outside of the building on a regular basis and use your automobile, you're considered outside sales. And so you then get reclassified, reclassified because there is a higher exposure for a workman's comp claim because you're outside of the building. You're not always in the building. And that's one of the reasons why you see, when they do these reclassifications, because they start asking lots of questions of, you know, do you regularly leave the office to do? because they start asking lots of questions of, you know, do you regularly leave the office to do business? And if the answer is yes, you are going to be considered an outside salesperson. While your job might be mostly clerical, but if you're doing any of that clerical out of the building, you're then considered outside sales, so. Correct on that, Mr. Alicia?
Yes, you hit it right on the head. It's the exposure base. You could be doing clerical for 95% of your job. But if you do a little driving where the risk really is, it always defaults to the higher rated class code, even if it's a very small portion. So you are absolutely right, Supervisor.
All right. If there's no other questions, can I get a motion to move the, under new business, J2, approval of workman's comp and liability insurance to the current part of our meeting?
Trustee Wine Coop moves to approve the, moving the agenda. Oh, I didn't, J2. Oh, yes, that's fine.
Sorry. For, just for clarification of what we're doing. Wine Coop made a motion. Do we have a second?
Trustee Luji seconds.
Roll call.
Trustee Wine Coop.
Aye.
Trustee Luji.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
So motion carries to move this J2 up to the current part of the meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the workman's comp and liability insurance?
Trustee Luji moves to approve the workman's comp and liability insurance.
Trustee Stanyek, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Luji.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Wine Coop.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Alicia, for your time. We are now binding our coverage with you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Have a good evening this evening.
You too. Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, the reports, the acceptance of township elected official monthly reports. First up is the assessor, Connie Caricelli. Connie?
You have my written report and the statistical report. The most often asked question that comes into my office is, when are we going to get our tax bills? The county is still saying late fall, early winter. I've tried to go back channel. Back channel is telling me November, but that is not engraved in stone. So please be prepared that these bills will be out hopefully and payable by the end of the year. Otherwise, there's going to be some significant strain and tax implications for our homeowners and our business owners. That's number one. Number two, Assessor Keggy had put in a program called the Homeowner's Relief Fund. Now, this Homeowner's Relief Fund was to give $1,000 to people whose property tax bills, not their assessment, but their bills went up over 50%. This had a timeframe on it, and knowing that the cash involved was insufficient to possibly cover all of this, it was turned into a lottery. Well, because it was a lottery, people did not apply for this primarily because of the lottery component. So they have now put the deadline, October 31st, this Friday. And instead of having your tax bill be 50% higher, they have lowered it to 30% higher. And the refund was to be $1,000. I've been in the assessment profession for a very long time, and I never thought that property taxes in the assessment profession was going to be turned into a game of chance. Property taxes in assessment should be fair and equitable, and government should not be picking winners and losers out of very high property taxes in Cook County. Number two, there's an update on the senior freeze. It's been kicked around in the legislature all year long. Assessor Keggy sent out a press release calling on the legislature to raise the income level from $65,000, but he doesn't tell us how far he wants it raised. That's number one. The thing that truly concerned me is he suggested that it be automatically renewed every year. Incomes change every year. From the standpoint of RMDs, the required distribution from your IRS. And this is a problem because if, in fact, it was renewed every year, and let's just say that you applied for this before you were 73, when you have to take your RMDs, right? So you get on the senior freeze, you hit 73, now you've got to take your RMDs, and it no longer hits that income level. It means you're on, and yet, you've got additional income coming in. So what's happening? That means that portion of the property tax that that particular person isn't paying gets to be shared by all of you. So some of these things are absolutely ludicrous. He's putting the property tax burden on other people. And the other thing here is that my office strictly calculates income from an applicant's tax return. The county does not. They require only an affidavit. Now, this results in increased fraud, and again, it shifts the burden back to other people. So I'm terribly concerned about this. I know the legislature is looking at this. I've heard $70,000, $75,000, $80,000. I wish they'd start looking. As was mentioned earlier, we are in a higher cost of living area, and they may start looking at cost of living zones. Or maybe they just take the RMDs out of the equation. There are other ways of doing it, and I think they need to be a little more creative. But the government should not be picking winners and losers on this. And thirdly, I'm very pleased to tell you and welcome Alex Emperado to my staff. She's a CIAO. She has 19 years of experience in township government, and we're delighted that she's joined our team.
Thank you, Connie. Yes, I had an opportunity to meet Alex, wonderful woman, and glad to have her aboard. Thank you for your report. Now for the clerk's report, Sue Ellen.
I didn't have any FOIA's this month. We had two filings, the annual financial audit and the annual treasures report. And then the other update is the Mental Health and Wellness Committee. The applications were sent out. The notice was posted. The applications are due November 1st, and we are later in the agenda, hopefully approving two new members to the committee, and then we will get started with our first meeting in November, so.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, I have a little bit of a longer report, but I'm going to try and get through it rather quickly. In October, I attended the Schaumburg Township Electric Bus Tour to learn more about their electric bus fleet and operations and infrastructure. They're just getting started with this new fleet, so I hope to learn more about that in the future. I met with the organizer of the proposed 708 Mental Health Board referendum in Elk Grove Township to discuss their goals and to better understand what they believe a 708 board could accomplish beyond the township's current mental health initiatives. We also reviewed potential impact for taxpayers, to taxpayers, should the referendum pass as currently written. I met with Commissioner, Cook County Commissioner Maggie Trevor to provide an update on the township's programs and to discuss areas of shared interest related to social services and transportation. One of the topics had to do with some turkeys that the county might be able to provide us for our program. Unfortunately, the program is not going to occur this year due to the increased cost of turkeys. But we will continue to fulfill our mission of providing 1,000 Thanksgiving meals. I had an opportunity to visit with Pastor Stefan and Rosa at the Christus Victor Lutheran Church to discuss the church's community outreach efforts and continued partnership with the township. Sadly, Mayor Hoferd's wife, Linda, passed away. I attended the celebration of life yesterday. And wanted to give you a departmental update on the food and pantry and social services restructuring. As I think I've told a lot of you, township runs very, very well, and I'm not a guy to come in and blow things up to make it all mine, so I'm tinkering a little bit. And one of the changes to the structure and organization of Social Services Department and the food pantry staff was initiated in late September. Historically, the food pantry oversight has been under, been under the Director of Social Services. However, for a short period, operations were managed primarily by the food pantry manager with oversight from the township administrator. While the arrangement functioned well from a financial and HR perspective, it was not ideal for the day-to-day management or program coordination. So over the past several weeks, discussions have been held between the township administrator Izzy, Director of Social Services Cory, and myself to develop a structure that better supports staff and enhances service delivery to residents and provides clearer reporting and program development channels to the board. As of this month, the food pantry now reports directly to the Director of Social Services with daily operations continuing under the food pantry manager. This change restores programmatic alignment between the food pantry and the township's broader social service initiatives, and has allowed the township to forego hiring a replacement for the food pantry coordinator, effectively optimizing his existing staff resources. And I think that even Cory's comments earlier this evening about taking a holistic approach really reaffirms why this change makes a lot of sense. The food pantry is primarily supported through the General Assistance Fund, with additional support coming from the community donations. Job descriptions and salaries were reviewed and updated accordingly. Oversight to all township programs, services, and personnel remains with the township administrator under the direction of the township supervisor, assessor, and township board. The computer replacements. So I came on board and was made aware that we were going to have to make some changes to some of our hardware because of Windows 11 compliance. Microsoft announced that Windows 10 support will end on October 14th of 2025, which means security updates and patches will no longer be available after that date. Without these updates, township computers would face increases, increasing vulnerability and risk of malware infections of network breaches. To maintain cybersecurity and operational reliability, the township had to replace computers that would not meet Windows 11 Pro system requirements. This update ensures compliance, data protection, and continued system performance across all departments. The township refurbished computers that are recommended, set up and installed by R&amp;R Consulting, the township's contracted IT firm. There is no additional cost for the installation or setup as those services are already covered under the township's annual IT agreement. The department's requiring replacement of computers. There were two in the front office for transportation, two in social services, three in adult and family counseling. The assessor's office, four of them, to be coordinated directly by their staff in Cook County IT. Youth Services, we had to replace one. So the total township purchases of computers was eight. The Township Fund and General Assistance Fund, those eight computers at $315 comes out to $2,525.60. And the assessor's office, their four computers, will come out to $1,409.80. All costs were paid through existing equipment allocation in the Township Fund and General Assistance Fund, and no budget amendment or additional expenditures were required. So I have some more, but are there any questions to start with all of that? All right. So I wanted to just tell you a little bit about some of the events that occurred in September, in late September. We had, the Cereal Bowl took place on September 26th. That was just after our last township board meeting. And it's incredible. There was an outstanding 8,730 boxes of cereal were collected for the township food pantry. It's an increase of 25% between Elk Grove High School and Rolling Meadows High School. Wow, they did a fantastic job. And while I was rooting for my Mustangs, only because I'm a Rolling Meadows High School father, I was pleased to hand the trophy over to the principal of Elk Grove Township, or of Elk Grove High School. They did a fantastic job of collecting cereal. And when you think about the 1,100 families that are served by our food pantry and 8,000 boxes, really, we could use 11,000 boxes, if you really think about it, to make sure that every single family receives a box of cereal. But they are doing a fantastic job, and we are so pleased with our partnership with District 214 and both of the Kellys, the principal Kelly's, husband and wife team, which makes it so fun. In October, the Senior Walking Path had an outing on October 2nd, the last walking path of the year, with two people in attendance this month. And they're now part of the group. They're there every month. A few people have expressed hope that we'll continue the walking path next year. And so staff is looking at opportunities to continue with the walking path and come up with other ideas and ways to make sure that people are aware of this opportunity. PepsiCo has a distribution hub here in Elk Grove, and they held a food drive, a total 371 pounds of various items, which included canned goods to restock the food pantry shelves. We held our first flu vaccination clinic on October 17th, the first of two free flu vaccinating clinics held in the meeting hall. The next and last one will occur on Friday, November 7th. So if you need a flu vaccine, come back to this room on November 7th. And then also, we had, hold on one second, did I miss something? No, okay. Right. And then we also had NNR Global Logistics Food Donation. They supported us with another 324 pounds of donated food for the food pantry. Elk Grove Park District dropped off various items which were collected throughout their buildings totaling 590 pounds, benefiting the food pantry. And then we had, this past Saturday, the township held its first trunk-or-treat event out on the bicycle safety course, and they also used the community room as well. While the name trunk-or-treat was used for promotional familiarity, this was a township event designed as a walk-through experience rather than a car-based setup. The bicycle safety course was fully decorated, and staff created theme stations where participants collected candy and interacted with employees. The event was fully staffed by township employees, and also Trustee Dukes participated by manning one of the candy stations. Feedback from the attendees was overwhelmingly positive, and the weather was perfect for an outdoor setup. There was a lot of call for possibility of rain on Saturday, but township staff did their best, making lots and lots of prayers to make sure that we held off the rain. The event drew 163 participants, including local families and children, and was considered a success by both staff and residents. The team plans to build upon this experience next year to make next year's event even more successful. And we also just, I wanted to make sure that, I know we mentioned earlier in the meeting, but it's so important that we have our Thanksgiving drive right now. Our goal is for Our goal is $14,000, and we're at seven right now. So, if you have the ability to make a contribution, please visit our website or contact the township, and we'll find a way to receive a check or donation from you. Any comments or questions? And now, onto new business.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to accept the elected official monthly reports. Thank you.
Trustee Duke's motion to accept the assessor clerk and supervisor reports.
Trustee Weinkopf, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Weinkopf.
Aye.
Trustee Lojai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyak.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. We have no correspondence to read out, and we have no old business. First up, under new business, is Resolution Number 2025-15, approval of updated IGA with Elk Grove Village for snow and ice removal. I think that we briefly discussed this when they were doing an annexation of the cemetery road, but when that was occurring, I had asked staff to work with the Village of Elk Grove or Elk Grove Village to update our IGA for snow and ice removal as we were reducing the amount of miles covered. The reduction of one, of two miles basically in 2022 agreement has now been reduced to 1.30 miles under the new agreement, and the cost has been reduced from $19,000 to $14,438.65 for the upcoming 2025-2026 winter season. Is everybody an opportunity to look at the IGA?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Trustee Lojai motions to approve.
Trustee Stanyak, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Lojai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyak.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Weinkopf.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. Next up is number three, Resolution 25, 2025-16, approval of purchasing card agreement with Bucy Bank. So, I'm sure that the trustees, as you have been going through the bills and looking at them, you get to the one bill that takes quite a bit of time to go through and has lots and lots and lots of notes on it, and that's the credit card bill. Currently, we have one credit card program where the credit card number is the same for all of the, those that utilize it. It does not break it down by department. And so, what happens at the end of the month is there is a lot of time spent going through this credit card to make sure everybody knows exactly where the charges came from and that all of the receipts have been turned into the finance department. And this new process that is being proposed would have all of the, this is going to provide accountability, transparency, and security. So, currently, all the purchasing cards across all departments are consolidated into one statement, requiring significant administrative time to separate transactions, verify documentation, and assign expenses to the appropriate department. The process is time-consuming and limits transparency in department-level spending. So, to improve accountability, streamline reconciliation, and enhance overall financial transparency, I'm recommending that the township enter into a commercial purchasing card agreement with Bucy Bank, the township's current financial institution. The Bucy program has the following key advantages: a secure administrative portal allowing the township to manage cardholders, apply spending limits, and monitor transactions in real time; the ability to set custom limits and merchant categories restrictions for each user; the individualized statement and detailed reporting tools that simplify reconciliation and strengthen oversight; and one of my favorites is a 1% revenue share on the total card spend, providing a modest financial return to the township. Implementation without collateral, though I may need to consent to a reasonable hold if required by the bank. We're hoping that there is no collateral required for this as we are a current customer of Bucy Bank. The one thing I'll tell you is about the restrictions to the categories is something I'm familiar with in that I'm in the entertainment business, and there are times where people will try to use a credit card, a business credit card, for something. And while their motive is that they're paying for something that is for their company, it's a restricted category. So, this would be something like that as well, in that there'd be a little bit tighter controls, and we would, everybody would have, not everybody, department heads would have their own card, and we would be able to see in real time all spending, and that they would be able to see their statement, they would provide all the backup to it. It'll just really, really create a smoother and more transparent system. Does anybody have any questions about the authorization to enter into this card program?
Just a couple of quick comments.
Sure.
Trustee Weinkopf. I've been in a number of organizations that have different policies and practices around credit cards, and I find this to be the most desirable for this kind of an organization just in terms of a balance between internal controls and operational flexibility. Just for the members of the public, you know, there's often distrust in government about spending or waste or fraud, and I can assure you, as we look at the expense for Manila folders showing up on the Amazon account on the credit card every month, that we're not wasting and there's not fraud, and we can see it in such minute detail. So, when you elect folks to serve on the board trustees here, these are people that were every month looking at every expense of the township. And this enhances that because it allows, it seems to allow, department heads to, instead of having to track down an administrator to get every little thing approved, will have a policy that guides the decision-making in a tiered way. In that way, there'll be clear responsibility and accountability, and it'll make, I'm sure, Erica's job much easier, as well as, you know, setting up the opportunity for easier accountability. So, I think this is a great move. I really commend the administrator and the supervisor and Erica on working toward this, and I hope that it's something the rest of the board members will get behind as well.
Any other questions? Comments?
Trustee Lojai, I would also just like to second that. That 1% revenue share on total cards spent is very appealing, not only from a fiduciary conversation and point. My question would be to the administrator. I was reading recently about some school districts and other government agencies that have gotten in trouble with the point system on a credit card, as in people were taking the points that were earned from purchases. Is there a system in place here at Elk Grove Township, A, you know, where if we spend on a credit card, are we in an area, or do we have that type that earns points on purchases? Or is that the reference to the 1% revenue share right there?
So, that is the reference. The plus side with this particular credit card is it's very custom to a public entity like ours. So, the credit cards belong to the township, not the specific cardholder. So, admin, finance, the supervisor, the board, we have direct oversight of who gets a credit card, and then the financial state, financial policy that you'll see shortly, it will show you those tiers where decision-making lies, when do you need approval from two people versus when can you just go out and make that purchase yourself? I have talked very closely with our department heads and kind of talked to them about what their needs are. Different departments need different things. I can tell you right now that adult and family counseling, they have certain subscriptions or they have things that they pay from a credit card on a monthly basis, whether it's their software or some other things. And I don't, because those things are approved during budgeting, I don't need to be told every single month when it's going to happen, or can I borrow the credit card, or maybe I'm not here. Right now, we have a sign-out system, so it's very good for those things. But we do not have a point system at this time, and that revenue share is directly into the general town fund. So, that's very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, if there's no other questions, looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-16, approval of purchasing card agreement with Bucy Bank.
Trustee Weinkopf, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-16, approval of a purchasing card agreement with Bucy Bank.
We have a second?
Trustee Duke's second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Weinkopf.
Yeah, aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lojai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyak.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Next on the agenda is appointment of members to the Mental Health and Wellness Committee. The township Mental Health and Wellness Committee was established to review and make recommendations regarding the allocation of funds under the grant program as outlined by the township's adopted policy. The committee ensures that grant dollars are distributed responsibly and in a manner consistent with the township goals and community needs. The policy includes the committee of the township clerk, who serves as the chairperson, one trustee appointed annually by the supervisor, the adult and family counseling clinical director, which is Luanne, the social services director, which again is Cory, and up to three township residents appointed by the supervisor. I have served on this board for two years, so I'm familiar with the board and think that they do a lot of good work in going through the applications, asking the right questions to better understand the needs of the township, the needs of applicants, and understanding, you know, how the applicants benefit or provide services, I should say, to residents of the township. And currently, the budget this past year was $620,000, and at this point, I need to appoint a trustee, and I also need to appoint a resident as I'll no longer be serving as a resident. And so, first on our agenda is the consideration of trustee Robert Lojai for appointment to the Mental Health and Wellness Committee. Do I have any questions? Anybody want to make motion?
Do we interrogate the applicant before or after the motion?
I would figure that you guys know him well enough, but go for it.
I move.
I will tell you this, that I asked trustee Lojai to serve in this capacity. Definitely, you know, all four of you are definitely eager to learn and more about the operation of the township, and I thought that this would be a good opportunity for trustee Lojai to use his expertise of really kind of digging in and understanding exactly what goes on on this committee for his desire to always want to know a little bit more about exactly what's going on.
Move to approve the appointment of trustee Robert Lojai to the Mental Health and Wellness Board.
Trustee Duke's second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Weinkopf.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lojai.
I abstain.
Trustee Stanyak.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. And the next person that I would like consideration for appointment is Richard Keenley, also known as Dick Keenley. Dick is a former member of the township board. I served on the Mental Health and Wellness Committee with him at one point, and I appreciate his thoughtful considerations of each of the candidates and asking the appropriate questions to make sure that the township is getting the most out of the relationship that they have with these service providers. And I provided you all with a letter that he had sent to me and wanted to see if anybody had any questions for Dick Keenley at this time. If not, can I get a motion and a second? Or at least a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of resident Richard Keenley to the Mental Health and Wellness Board.
Trustee Lojai seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Weinkopf.
Aye.
Trustee Lojai.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyak.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye. Last up, under new business, is the consideration for the approval of a part-time evening receptionist for the west side of the building. As the township continues to expand service hours and community programming, particularly during the evening, administration has identified a need for front desk coverage to ensure staff and visitor safety, coordinated communication, and professional support after hours operations. The part-time evening receptionist is designed to provide coverage at the west side of the township building Monday through Thursday from approximately 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This position will assist in program, will assist staff and program participants using facility, the facility during evening hours, and will serve as the first point of contact for residents, clients, and visitors entering through the west side lobby. Adult and family counseling has a minimum of two therapists in their department each weeknight, and on some nights, there's up to four. Currently, people, and also, the food pantry is open for evening hours on Tuesday. So, currently, if someone is coming to the township for adult and family counseling, they remain in their vehicle until it's, until their therapist is ready for them. They text their therapist, the therapist texts them back, and at the appropriate time, the therapist meets them at the door, welcomes them in, and takes them to their office. Occasionally, clients bring a family member, whether they're right there or whether they're a family member and they need somewhere to be. And so, from time to time, you might have a couple of people waiting for someone who's in adult and family counseling, and someone knocks at the door. It's very difficult for family members to sit there and not open the door. So, if they not open the door, then they seem rude. If they do open the door, then they've kind of like violated our security in the building. So, it's a no-win situation for the people that are inside the building. And I just think that this is, you know, the best thing that we can do to make sure that the people that we serve are, you know, in a better position for, you know, when it comes to safety and security, as well as the very important people that service those clients. So, has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the request from township administrator Isabella Manzo?
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions?
Trustee Weinkopf, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate that this is an important move. I think that it's difficult to put the stress on therapists to manage that system the way that you've just described it, supervisor, and this is definitely an improvement. I'm sure that the department head appreciates that, as will her staff. My concern is that the salary that we're posting is $15 to $17 an hour. I've just posted for a very similar position, and we're finding that the range is significantly higher than that, so more in the $17 to $21 an hour starting salary for that kind of a position. So, I'm concerned about recruiting for it and retention for that. Would encourage us to look at that budget. I don't think we should hold up approving the position, but would want to consider reviewing the budget to see if we could allow for a slightly higher starting salary, keeping in mind that there's about 6 million Americans working multiple jobs right now in order to make their households go. We just heard earlier from Director Dewey about the stress and strain on many working families right now. So, you know, we're not sure that this is an extra, like, extra income for somebody as opposed to necessary income, and I think it might be difficult to find an appropriate person despite the job qualifications being fairly accessible for, you know, a lot of people in the township to apply. I still think it's worthwhile to examine whether I still think it's, it's worthwhile to examine whether we can afford a slightly higher range.
So if, if there was an, well, I'd like to hear from some of the other board members just for concurrence of trustee Weinkoop's opinion on the, on the salary range, and I'm only asking so that when we have a motion to approve...
It doesn't require salary range. You can approve.
Right, no, I understand, but I want to make sure that, that everybody...
Isn't agreeing.
That we can't just take one person's opinion over everybody else. I'm not disagreeing with trustee Weinkoop, but what I wouldn't want to do is leave this meeting without hearing from the rest of you that you agree that there should be a little bit more wiggle room in this, this starting number if necessary, up to $20 an hour.
Trustee Stajnik, I will echo everything that trustee Weinkoop said. Either, it, it comes from someone who has three jobs at this point, and with wages not being increased for such a long time, and everything else going up, it would be great if our township could take a second look at, at what we can afford and at the, we're talking about what, $4 difference per hour at this point for the new employee, for the receptionist.
Yeah, trustee Luji, I would also agree with that. Even a $4 an hour increase in this age of great inflation over the past few months is a really make or break for a number of families and residents, and just doing quick math, it still falls within our responsibilities and financial responsibilities. But of course, we would also then most likely have to look at other payments that we are paying. For example, if there are other people working $15 an hour and we posted $21, what would that do to people currently working in the township as well? So I'm in complete agreement about the increase, especially with trustee Weinkoop's experience of hiring people at the $15 to $17 an hour range, and the difficulty of that, four to eight can be a very hard time. So making that more of an incentive would be, I think, a very good idea for the safety and security of our evening programs and residents.
Question, do we have a employee with a similar job description and the part-time hours that, and the range that we don't, so?
So currently, you know, we're using the, the volunteer receptionist at the front. Otherwise, everybody in the front office kind of takes turns up at that desk. This really is something that's just very, very new. There is no educational requirements, there are no prerequisites for, for having any kind of prior experience, so it's, really is an entry-level position, but we appreciate that the board is flexible and increasing if possible and necessary, but just wanted to make sure that this wasn't something where we heard from one and that the rest of you weren't on board. So thank you for your, for your, your input. Can we get a motion to approve this new position?
Motion to approve the part-time evening receptionist.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Trustee Luji?
Aye.
Trustee Weinkoop?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Stajnik?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye. That closes out New Business. Next on the agenda is discussion and comments from trustees for the benefit of the township. Does anybody have any comments?
I mean, all I'll say is, you know, as a, as a wage earner, you know, a lot of people who benefit from these services, such as the social services and the food pantry, they earn an hourly wage during regular business hours. So to, to make it to the township before 4 o'clock, then you have to make a choice between, you know, between working or, or utilizing these services. So it is really important that we have these services available after 4 o'clock. So, so definitely really good move to extend these hours and to have that receptionist so that we can extend those hours effectively and safely. As for the, you know, increase in the wage, definitely something to look at, especially if it's an entry-level position, definitely be something to look at, but...
Thank you.
And trustee Luji as well. I just wanted to say once again a big thank you to all of the people that came out tonight. It's my firm belief that democracy dies in darkness, so thank you so much for coming to our monthly Elk Grove Township Board meeting, as well as to Margaret and Jen for our first public comments on the board. Thank you so much for that. And Margaret, thank you so much for all you do for registering in the League of Women Voters as a high school teacher. We do a lot of drives for teenagers, and it's one of our most important responsibilities, so thank you so much for doing that. And I also just add on to some of the aspects that Supervisor Scaletta talked about, the food pantry is needed now more than ever, particularly with federal workers and members of our military not currently getting paid in 2025, and I just wanted to publicly shout out once again the Great Chicago Food Depository, Meyer, and our community for donating a record number of food last month in September in 2025. The amount of items that those, that the Greater Chicago Food Depository and Meyer have donated alone, we could not do this alone. So thank you to everybody that continues to donate and keep doing that, particularly with the Thanksgiving holiday and then the winter celebrations in December.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, briefly, we're closing on the end of October, which means that Domestic Violence Awareness Month is closing out in the next few days. And I just want to recognize that as the township, we, some of the funds that we grant to organizations go to specifically domestic violence services, so Lifespan, Wings, and other counseling services are also working with survivors of violence. And I think it's important for us all to recognize, and I'm sure most of the people in this room do, that families every day are impacted by domestic violence, and there are many intersections of domestic violence with other of these problems that the township is here to address and to support people mitigating some of the, the effects of society's failures in, in individual households. And so it's not just the survivor, it's the, the family, it's the children, it's the neighbors, it's the extended family, and it erodes our community when these things happen. And these are, these are cultural issues, and so I appreciate the work that our Adult and Family Counseling team does, our Social Services team does, because every day, there's somebody in Elk Grove Township. We've got 40-some-odd thousand households, 96,000, give or take, people in this community, and every day, somebody's impacted by this, and, and when they are showing up here at the township, they're received warmly, and they're supported and offered referrals to appropriate services and care. And so I just want to keep in mind that whenever you run into somebody in the community where there is a question about if there's food security or housing security, or whether there's safety in their household, the township is a good first step. It's welcoming and warm and supportive, and has evening hours. And so just appreciation to the staff who are having these conversations with residents when they come in, and again, just a reminder that some of the tax dollars that are coming into the township are going back out to serve people in our community. And once again, even though this is a problem all across our society and other societies, the funding that everybody is contributing to this here through their tax dollars through the township stays local. So there's accountability about making sure that we're serving residents of the township when we're serving survivors of, of violence. And I appreciate that this board historically has been good about that, and I hope that we can continue to both be counted on, to provide that support, and do so with integrity and with a mind towards helping all of our neighbors.
Thank you.
So kind of following up on that, this year, between CANWIN, which is a multilingual domestic and sexual violence survivors advocacy group, they're located in Park Ridge, and while they focus on Asian immigrants, they'll accept all. Northwest CASA, which empowers survivors in ending sexual violence in north and northwest suburbs, located in Arlington Heights, and then Lifespan Survivors for Services of Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse, located in Displanes, and of course, Wings, Domestic Violence Services, including but not limited to emergency shelter. Between all four of those organizations, there's nearly $60,000 in grants that are provided by the township, which is actually provided by the taxpayers, which is about 10% of the overall budget. So as you can see, it makes a lot of sense that the committee is well-rounded, not only with social services, but with also Adult and Family Counseling, to make sure that we're addressing the needs of the community. And, and thank you for reminding us all about October being Domestic Violence Month, or Violence Prevention Month, and it's, it's good to see that the township continues to make sure that every part of someone's mental health is, is being taken care of. If there's nothing else, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Dukes, motion to adjourn.
Trustee Weinkoop, second.
Roll call?
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Weinkoop?
Aye.
Trustee Luji?
Aye.
Trustee Stajnik?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye. Thank you for joining us. We hope to see you next month.